Call this meeting to order, I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, can you motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
Okay, on Paris AI.
Alright.
Both, motion carried. Open forum, would anybody like to speak tonight at all?
It's fine, no it's fine.
We're good.
Yeah, so all we would do now is just open the public hearing.
Yep. Alright, it is 5:31, they're gonna open a public hearing here for wastewater treatment facility facilities plans.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and commission members, I think the commission is actually in the audience here, so, um, tonight, we're just gonna be going through, Susan from SEH will be providing us the summary of the wastewater plant and the improvements that we're doing. And so the city council as the official owner of the plant also needs to adopt the plan. The utility commission has reviewed this in great detail, and Susan is here tonight to outline what the commission has, uh, has approved, uh, however, we still need to hold a public hearing to get the public comment on this. Uh, so Susan's here this evening, and I'll be her presenting the slides, but the utility commission has approved this plan, and will be, and has recommended that you approve it as well. So, I'll turn it over to Susan, and just for the official record, I do have a copy of the affidavit and publication.
So wastewater facilities plan is reported for funding and community, we're starting with a public hearing, so there's a community in common. So I'm gonna talk about what the facility is gonna look at, and what your recommendations and the costs are associated with that. So the objectives of a facilities plan is to really look forward. So the city has done planning in the past, looking at what the wastewater facility needs. Uh, the facilities plan is looking forward, so it is projecting up 20 years, where are the flows and what it's gonna be like, as well as what are the, um, the nutrients and the other regulatory requirements, um, that may be in place in 20 years, and how can the facility be, um, changed and modified to address those needs. So the first, uh, step in the facility plan is really deciding what they design for these areas for those 20 years, and the, one of the major parts is the population projections. So on the screen, I'm showing, um, a few various different, uh, population projections that have been made either the county, um, there's the comprehensive plan from the city. Ultimately, we settled upon, in reviewing with Mike and Tim at the wastewater plant, we settled upon a 20-40 population, just under 4,000 residents, um, and so that's the blue, the blue line there. And what that means in terms of flows and loads to the wastewater treatment plant, um, what we're seeing right now is the current flows and loads to the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, about 2.71 MGd comes to the facility, or is allocated to industries to cover the facility, the capacity of the plant is only 3 MGd, so we're right up near the capacity of the plant.
MGd stands for?
Oh yes, million gallons per day. Um, the future population that we projected adds another 25,000 gallons per day, and then that gets us really close to the 3 MGd capacity, and in, uh, working with Mike, we anticipated that there could be additional industries, or some of the existing industries may want to expand and increase the flows that they discharge to the waste pool plant, so we are designing around a 3.5 MGd flow. So that means the existing plant needs to increase by half an MGd. And what that means for the regulations and the discharge requirements today, and this is really small, but, um, right now, the limits are in kilograms per day and milligrams per liter. In the future, at 3.5 MGd, we need to freeze those limits, and so if we push again, um, the new limits, instead of meeting 15 milligrams per liter, um, BOD, it goes down to 12. So there's a little bit more treatment required in order to accommodate the additional flow and so forth. So ultimately, the study recommends three types of needs for the wastewater plant. The first is to address current conditions. There are capacity conditions and performance issues in some various places throughout the facility, um, including the set of huge pretreatment final clarifiers. Um, the, another need is to address the future capacity needs of the facility, so again, bringing in from 3 MGd to 2.5 MGd, and there's improvements that are needed to be able to take on the initial flow. And then the last need is future nutrient requirements. The MPCA currently has ammonia and phosphorus in its implements, they anticipate that there's going to be a total nitrogen or nitrate limit, and so we wanted to have a strategy for the facility to look for those limits. So, push again, this is an aerial of the wastewater treatment plant. We considered a number of alternatives throughout the study, the first area that we focused was the influent pumpated preliminary treatment building, grit removal, primary treatment, secondary treatment, the centrifuge, and flow equalization, and also phosphorus. For the influent pumping and pre-treatment, currently, there are two screw pumps that pump all of the flow, uh, up to static screens, and those two screw pumps are sized for 2.5 million gallons per day, and they're 30 years old. The static screens, there's three of them each size for 1.5 MGd, and they are also between 30 and 40 years old, depending on which pot which the three milliliters can add. And so, we need, let me push one more time, we need five, oh, yeah, we need 5.3 MGd. So those unit processes are lacking capacity, and for today's closing, that. So when...
A little behind you, sorry.
No, that's okay. So, for the alternatives, we looked at, we have in the existing buildings, you know, trying to put more screens in and additional pump capacity, and we also looked at a new building, uh, that houses this new equipment. We selected the new pumping and pre-treatment building alternative, which is laid out in the red, if we could go back, laid out in the red on that site plan. The cost is a little bit more than we have any existing, but what you get is a brand-new building, brand-new equipment, and spaces that are laid out for the actual equipment that we're dealing with. So retrofitting the existing building, it is very cramped, and there's not necessarily enough space to access the equipment that we would like. For grit removal, that was installed in 2011, so a newer portion of the treatment plant, it hasn't performed well since it was installed. Uh, we looked at two options, improving the hydraulics of the existing system and retrofitting with a different technology. That other technology was piloted five years ago, uh, but right now, the city is moving forward with raising the wall heights to improve the hydraulics of the existing system. For primary treatment, there are three primary clarifiers, those settled solid, kind of at the front of the plant, those don't have capacity for 3.5 MGd. We looked at a number of alternatives, um, and ultimately, we're recommending making no changes. So we're gonna have to work with the MPCA to make sure that they, they're aboard with that, we've had some preliminary discussions, um, but ultimately, the units don't perform all that well, they're really good at removing the grease though, so we still want them in the process, we've talked about maybe getting rid of them, but because they remove the grease, we wanna keep them in place, and, um, see if the MPCA will be okay not adding a fourth unit. For secondary treatment, that consists of tripling filters, activated sludge, and then final clarifier. So this is where most of the treatment at the facility is taking place. Um, their final clarifiers are 54 years old, two of them, and they're very shallow, so we looked at some options for those clarifiers, we looked at replacing two, the two smaller ones with a larger unit, and we also looked at converting the existing final clarifiers of new mechanicals to improve performance. Uh, we're recommending new final clarifier for that, um, and that, again, because the existing ones are old and shallow, investing in them isn't going to, isn't a good long-term strategy. And then it also putting a new one, um, you can see the, the two smaller clarifiers, um, are there, getting rid of the smallest one allows us to put the infletreatment building in there, it's all solid, it's all solid. So we're looking, getting rid of both of those and putting one in place. Uh, also related to the secondary treatment is the nutrients. So right now, there's an ammonia limit, and ammonia has been challenging to make. Do you do think that making improvements to the clarifiers will help the facility be able to treat the ammonia? Um, but our modeling indicates that there still might be some exceedances or some air days where we're gonna be above the monthly average concentration limit. If that happens frequently, there is a step that can be put in in the future, we're not planning for it today, but as a part of the system, integrated fixed film actuator sludge system. And then, when it comes to total nitrogen limit, it's not in 10 or 15 years down the road, denitrification filters could be added to the facility for those, to meet that total measure. And then, on the sludge side, um, right now, there's one centrifuge, a centrifuge takes the bio solids that are produced in the treatment process and dewaters them, so that you don't need as much sludge storage capacity. Facility stores sludge for 108 days, so the drier you can get it, the less storage you need. Right now, there's only one centrifuge, and something was laid out for two. Um, there's been some reliability, reliability issues with the existing one, so we added a cost for a second unit as well. Flow equalization, there's currently just over 200,000 gallons of flow equalization capacity at the plant, and what that does is, um, when the wastewater comes in, they can divert a small portion of that influent flow, so the rest of the downstream buses don't have to be sized for the full flow. Um, and that becomes important, we need to shave a little bit more of that influent flow in order to not have to make more improvements to the clarifiers that are in contact taken and that will compete. So we need an additional 36,000 gallons of capacity for the equalization tanks, and you can do that by raising the wall heights of the existing structure. So ultimately, all of these improvements are kind of broken out into, uh, capital improvements table. Um, we have all of the improvements that are recommended, they add up to 10.4 million dollars, um, and we have that project scheduled for 2019 to 2022, so it's gonna take a couple of years to construct. Um, $100,000 for 2019 is for the great improvements that are, uh, the city is moving forward with already, and then in 2023, we're anticipating maybe an IT system would be down the road, and then further out where the total nitrogen limit comes into play, that's another 5.5 million dollars.
Susan, do you wanna touch on TN limits, why that's on here?
Yeah, that's on here, just, uh, total nitrogen limit may come in the next 10 or 15 years, so we wanna make sure that the city is planning for that, and that there's fund to balance, um, kind of just a number to keep in mind, you know, the rates and how much the wastewater fund has. Um, so in terms of the rate impacts, we estimated top budget cost is 10.4 million dollars. Um, we're looking at, the, the, by completing the facility plan, the city is eligible for public facilities authority financing, it's a low-interest loan, and, uh, this table here essentially, um, it identifies with 2017 and 2018, the actual costs, and then in 2020, we have the new, the new improvements coming online. So, the O and S costs, the operations and maintenance costs are a little over a million dollars, and now continue into the future. Uh, there's depreciation, right now, the depreciation is being fully funded, um, and as you can see in 2020, we're, we're using the depreciation funds to pay the debt service. So the annual debt service becomes about a million dollars in 2020. And then the total annual cost in 20 times about 2.22 million, the revenue that you bring in still covers that cost, so there's no net rate increase needed to pay for these improvements, um, and that's, again, using the depreciation that's funded to pay the debt service. Um, but because the improvements, um, are there to reduce flow, or BOD or TFS, we need to rebalance the rates, and then going forward, the rates still need to increase at inflation based, you know, if the costs to operate the facilities increase about 2%, maybe the rates should continue to match that. For the project schedule, the facility plan will be submitted in a couple weeks, um, there's a PPL application that's needed for funding, and as well as, uh, there's an IEP list intended use checklist that, uh, the city should get in June of this year. Um, we'd look to begin design soon, this break early summer, so that the design can be completed in February of 2020, and, um, that is timed so that we can get all, on all the funding lists. The current NPD has permit expires in 2019, so the, the legal come in, they'll have to get a permit modification, um, and then the construction will be in 2020, 2021. Now, the way the funding works, um, once you're on the list, if you, every, every project is assigned a point, and then there's a point to cut off, and if you don't make that cut off, but you have your plans and specs approved by the MPCA, you become the carryover project for the next year of funding. So there's a good likelihood that Melrose, the wastewater plant, wouldn't be funded the first year, but that the next year, you would become a carryover project, so that's why it's important to get the February 20, or 2020, uh, designs through the MPCA. That's all I have, are there any questions?
So I do have a question for you. Um, how do you see, like, the sodium chloride discharge, um, 'cause you see this state of Minnesota is gonna start clamping down on that, or, or, but most people like the discharge from the water softener, how do you see that affecting the future of our wastewater plant if they clamp down on us?
So I'm, fortunately, you're very likely to get, um, chloride limit in your next permit, um, which is just a foot to expire, and unfortunately, there's not much you can do about it at the wastewater treatment plant. So, the only way you can treat is to, uh, get a new resuscitation system at the wastewater plant, it's not going to be past effective. Um, so the, the best strategy is to go up the area and sort of long compliance schedule overall.
Okay.
I've got a question on the, um, ammonia and nitrate limit, potential change, TN limit?
TN limit?
No, that will probably come down as a state mandate, um, correct, or some MPCA requirement?
Yeah, it'll come, it'll come from the MPCA, yes.
No, those changes, when they make a legislative change like that, or a limit change, there's gotta be some type of, you know, time to compliance, where, yeah, 15, 20 years, because not everyone's updating their wastewater treatment every year, so.
Yes, so they, you can negotiate a compliance schedule when the limits come out with your MCA, and you can negotiate a 15 to 12-year compliance schedule, but you need to justify that.
Right.
And sometimes the justification is that you're paying debt service on a project that you previously completed.
Yeah.
And you can't afford it yet, but yes, you can negotiate it, it's not gonna be a long term.
Right, and my, my point is, is if, if we're, we're addressing it in our current plan, then are we gonna be required to do it immediately? If we don't address it, because we're gonna upgrade before the limit comes down the pipe,
No.
Then, you know, are they gonna expect you to jump on it right away?
No, no, it still, it still comes down to justifying, and, you know, you can, um, basically, for a compliance schedule, every year, you need a deliverable, and you can say, well, we wanna analyze our ammonia from our industries now, you can, you can create a deliverable every year, just push that out, so the fact that we've addressed it in this facility plan, to me, like, you would give that answer.
Sir, any other questions, or anybody else?
So, Mr. Mayor, what we recommend then is that we close the public hearing, and then to take actions as outlined in the memo.
5:54, can I get a motion to close, uh, public hearing? Can I get a second?
Second.
On Paris AI?
Alright.
Both, motion carried. Under action?
So, Mr. Mayor, what we would ask is just for an administrative procedure, is that we ask for a motion from the utility commission to rescind, uh, the previous resolution on this project, which is UC 219, 2019 dash two.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Aye?
Then, Mr. Mayor, what we would ask then is that the commission then reauthorize dash three, which is, just clears, clarifies the resolution.
And I'll second that.
Aye.
And then we would ask for the council to do a sister resolution to endorse the utility commissions.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, can I get a second? Second. On Paris AI?
Aye.
Both, motion carried.
So, Mr. Mayor, and, and commission, the next step is that this goes back before the utility commission now, and the council has adopted this plan, we'll then forward this on, uh, get this formalized. Uh, also, this coming November is when we'll be adopting rates accordingly to adjust this. Uh, Susan, and I, and Tim Vogel, and Tessa tomorrow are gonna have a pretty detailed conversation about how we can best fund these projects, but we think that we can do that with a combination of the debt that just expired, uh, so right now, the wastewater fund is debt-free, and so we worked hard to phase this in, and so now's the time to do that without a significant impact to the rate payer. So, that's what we're gonna try to identify tomorrow with some, and I was getting griefed by one person in the audience here, but we need to keep it as low as possible already, so obviously we will.
Sounds good. And so for this, uh, joint special meeting, um, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Make a motion.
Do we have to anything else? Okay, and motion second?
Second.
On Paris AI?
Aye.
Opposed, this motion's carried, and can we start the council meeting? Alright, okay, uh, let's see, motion to, uh, approve the agenda for the city council meeting?
Council, yeah. Do you print out council agendas, paper copies? They just didn't get on the table, that's all. We just had two additions to the agenda, which are gambling resolutions.
Okay, I got it. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On Paris AI?
Aye.
Both, motion is carried. Does anybody like to talk, have to open forum of the regular city council meeting? Okay, we're in the consent agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of bills and purchase orders, approval of investments, there's, uh, three different gambling resolutions, uh, the community development, director step increase, uh, fire truck donation. Is there any questions on any of these? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On Paris AI?
Aye.
Both, motion carried. We have a presentation for, uh, retired firefighter Rick Behrens, who's been on our fire department for 29 years. Um, Chief Buddy, would you like to tell us a little bit before we give him? Tell us a little bit about Rick's long career.
Alright, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, uh, some of you guys have heard these, uh, these things before, but it's worth repeating, 'cause I think it's, uh, worthy of our, uh, our town, say, and townships that have served. So, as you know, Rick has served 29 years with Melrose Fire Department. Um, it's one of our toughest things that we have to say goodbye to a, a good guy that has done a lot for the organization and for the community. But, before he retires, I figured we'd throw out a few numbers. So, in his 29 years, he had seven chiefs, he served as chief from 98 to 99. His first year as a chief, he responded to 78 calls, 78 calls. First call as a chief he responded to was a fire alarm at the Legion at, on June 11th at 7:16. We have five current fire members that have served when Rick was on as chief, so five current members right now that, that serve on the department when, uh, Rick was chief. He served on two big town fires, and he was really close to the third one, which was the craft one, but the doctor said he couldn't leave the clinic for his physical, I guess. Uh, and he went through 1,044 pager tests in his, uh, 29 years of service, 1,044 pager tests. And last but not least, he is very creative, because he has named one of our, uh, current businesses in town today, and it's still functioning, as Shaggy's Toy. He is the one that came up with the name for Shaggy's Toy. So, with that, I'd like to congratulate Rick for his 29 years of service with the department, and he's gonna be missed very much.
Rick, we just have a little, uh, little momento, it says, "An appreciation and recognition for outstanding bravery and dedication for the past 29 years of service to the Melrose Fire Department." Just wondering if we could get a picture with you, and, and thank you for it. Bring Rick over there, alright, we can do it, come on, Rick.
Your tuxedo is a declinier's, Rick? Ricky B?
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
Alright, sir. Thank you.
I told you, Rick, I was gonna make it simple for you, so, but we need a five-minute speech out here, now, keep going.
I just wanna thank everybody for everything, and stuff, and, with the run, I'm gonna miss it dearly, a lot of fun, a lot of excitement, some tragedies, but it was all worth it. And, like I told the guy before, I said, I'm never getting off unless I can't walk. A lot of things come up, so, time to rewind. But again, we thank everybody for everything, we appreciate it.
Alright, on to reports, Chief Mouse?
Good evening, uh, January 2019, in the traffic area, we had 21 citations issued for the month, 85 verbal warnings, four written warnings, uh, we had 407 calls and requests for service, last year at this time, we had 342, so we're up by 65 from last year already. Um, 19 agency assists, that's done, down by about 10, we usually average high twenties, uh, low thirties, and we probably attribute some of that to the cold weather we had back in January, where nobody went anywhere thankfully, um, in those cold snaps. Uh, some areas that I'd like to highlight for, um, for the, the city is, uh, snow removal, Gary and his crew has done an amazing job with getting dump done, seems like every five minutes around here, uh, trying to get things cleaned up, uh, just give those folks some extra space, as well as the private folks that are doing parking lots and whatever. We had a couple, uh, crashes in parking lots because people weren't paying attention to plow drivers within the parking lots and, and that sort of thing. Uh, secondly, drive according to the conditions of the road, uh, granted, we all know when there's snow around, it's harder to get around, but once it gets cleared off, the roads probably still have some, uh, maintenance that needs to be done, or they need to, uh, you know, be in the condition they are for a little while anyway, just drive accordingly, uh, we had a couple accidents because of, uh, people overdriving on maybe some hard-packed snow, and those sorts of things, so, uh, I believe that's pretty much it, unless there's any questions from the council.
Um, I did wanna say one thing, I just wanna say thanks, there was a couple of young people that were out, uh, shoveling fire hydrants, and also just to let people know that, that is your responsibility to, um, keep the fire hydrants clear, 'cause, uh, if you have a fire, you, you would probably not want a firefighter to dig out your hydrant at that time, you probably wanna take care of that, so we can get in there as fast as possible, so just keep that in mind, um, take care of your fire hydrants, and keep them clear for us. Thank you, Chief. 200 and what? 247 hydrants in the city of Melrose. Nice. So, again, thanks to the two young people that were shoveling them out the last couple days, so. City attorney report, Scott?
Good evening, uh, written report, a lot of it, like you say, just kind of some updates, you heard last, uh, meeting that the, the Ritter nuisance got taken care of, there's just, uh, a little follow-up that, uh, you'll see, having scheduled a court hearing, we have to unschedule the court hearing, so there's, it's all a process, so it took a little, spent some time on that. You've got the St. Mary's plat coming up, and spent some time, uh, uh, working on that with the staff. Uh, question came up, it's kind of an usual one, usually street vacations are pretty straightforward, if you think about, you know, if you want to vacate Main Street, it's all part of one plat, and it runs through the middle, and the blocks on either side are part of the same plat, so, everybody assumes you vacate the street... So everybody assumes you vacate the street. Every, the folks on each side of the street get half, and that works in most circumstances. We had a situation where there's a street. On one side, it's not platted. On the other side, it is platted, but it's the edge of the plat. Plat ends on the block. Street isn't included in the plat. So where does, what, who owns that strip of land if we vacate it? And the answer is, I don't know. You'd have to go back to the records and figure out who owned it before we put the street over it, because when we have a street, we just have an easement. We don't own the property, we just have an easement to put our road in there. If we take it off, it goes back to that owner and it's probably someone who's been dead for 100 years. So the more we looked into it, the more we decided, we're not going to pursue this any further because it's just a can of worms. Little different. Also then, I was just briefly asked, we got new members, so it seems like a good time just to kind of have a little refresher on the open meeting law. It goes on and on and on in the statutes. It covers a lot of ground, things I'm not going to talk about. I mean, it discusses regular meetings, special meetings, emergency meetings, closed meetings, how-do-you-notice meetings. Don't worry about any of that. That's why you have staff and me on those topics. Where you folks get in trouble potentially with the open meeting is not when you're at a meeting that's been called. You know, the problem for you as council members is that, you know, you act as a group. So if there's three of you, you got a quorum. You've got a group then that has the authority to act. So what does that mean if Travis and Bunker and Joe are sitting up at JD's? Is that a violation? It's three of you. And it's like, well, you need a violation plus what are you doing? You know, if you're sitting there talking about city business and discussing items that are going to be coming before, then yeah, that's not a good idea. You're making the decision at what's not a meeting, a public meeting. So if you run into each other, it's not that you got to quick turn the other way and avoid each other, but you know, talk about the weather or the basketball team or something else. Don't talk about city business.
Joe's buying.
Joe's buying. That would be a long discussion, I suppose. But I highly doubt it. The other thing that sometimes comes up and it falls under the heading what they call serial meetings. And that's a little different. Tony talks to Justin on the phone or sends him an email. Justin forwards it to Joe or calls Joe. Joe forces, you know, pretty soon you've all talked about it, but, or you've shared an email, but there was never three of you in there at one time. Is that a violation? And, you know, I was looking at it. It's a bad practice, but it's a real gray area. If you look at the leagues, you know, and they're your insurance company and they don't want claims, they will tell you, "Don't do it." You know, that's the conservative advice. Looking at the cases, interpreting it, the Supreme Court has been hesitant to lay down a real bright line for you guys because on the one hand, yeah, they see where that can circumvent the law. I mean, the whole point of it is that you're supposed to be making the decisions out in the open and in public and not in back rooms someplace. And isn't this just kind of circumventing that, using different technology to get the same result? On the other hand, you know, in looking at it, I mean, they said, you know, that they got to balance that against what they call the duty of members to persuade each other to resolve issues. So on the one hand, yeah, you got a responsibility to talk to each other and it's not expected that you will only talk to each other at these meetings. It's kind of like, well, when have you gone over the line? And there isn't a lot of real clear guidance. So the best I can tell you is be careful. I think if you're thinking, well, there's no record of it anyways, you know, if you're using your phones or your emails, there's always a record. And, you know, it can be brought up and reviewed and if it looks like, yeah, this isn't just trying to persuade each other, talking about the issues to get a consensus, but it's really trying, it's a, there's an intent to try to circumvent the law, then you're going to have problems. Ultimately, if the, well, it's a criminal offense to violate the act and if it's egregious enough, you can be removed from office. So on that happy note, unless you've got some questions, I'll sit down. But I wished I could give you better guidance. Like you say, the league has decided it's best to be very conservative, but again, they're your insurance company. They don't want claims and so they just avoid it. The court's saying, nah, we got to give you guys a little leeway because you got to talk to each other and we can't expect that they're all going to happen in public forums like this, but don't abuse the privilege, so. Okay? Any other questions? Report, anything here?
Any question? All right, thank you. Community development director.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi. In your packet is a full summary of the previous meetings for both planning and zoning and MATA. Planning Commission meets next week. They're going to be discussing the sign ordinance, including modifying potentially the ordinance to allow electronic inkblow copy signs on walls as well as what's previously been allowed, which was on freestanding monument signs. Also, they'll be reviewing the non-conforming use ordinance and making some changes to update that so that it's more in line with what the state statutes require. And also, they'll be looking at outdoor seating, restaurant-type seating potentially being allowed, like on sidewalks downtown. The only other thing of note is Land O' Lakes got their certificate of occupancy this week. They did some onsite improvements to their wastewater pretreatment.
Great.
That's everything.
Thank you. Okay, now we are on to action items. Preliminary final plat, Church of St. Mary's. Keep you standing, okay? We'll keep you standing, okay?
Sure. Everything in your packet is pretty much complete and tells the story pretty well. This isn't a new project. We've seen this before as a conditional use permit. This is now basically plating all of the new church area, the cemetery area, the school area and the parking lot north of the school as one lot and then the church rectory and office building as another lot. So it's basically creating two lots. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the resolution. The letter of understanding was drafted similar to what was previously approved in Casey's, just basically outlining the previous approvals and current approvals that are set forth then and documented. Staff recommends approval. The one thing I do want to clarify, they have a fire lane that's proposed around the proposed new church. That, they're planning to basically have that be gravel and they're not planning to dedicate it as a road or an easement. I reviewed that with the fire department. They find that to be acceptable as long as they can access it when there's emergencies and as long as it's maintained as, you know, snowplowed and that sort of thing. So I think everyone's in agreement and from the staff perspective, we're recommending approval.
All right. The action item is provide consideration to adopt Resolution Number 2019-14, Resolution of Probable Case Number PP 1 2019-201 and FP-1-2019-202, preliminary and final plat requested by the Church of St. Mary's. I'll make the motion to approve it. Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Do we need a motion also to, on her signing the letter of understanding?
Yes.
Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, B is to give consideration to making a recommendation that council approved preliminary plat for Melrose One Stop.
Staff has been working with the applicants. We've had a couple of issues just with things needing to still be turned in related to title work, plant seating, the preliminary plat, still the 2017 version is in your packet. We need to see a plan regarding their driveway curbs as they're planning to modify that a little bit and they need to do a little bit of work at least on stormwater to kind of figure out whether they need to do modifications related to stormwater or not. Because of all of these ongoing outlining by issue, staff is recommending that we table this until the next meeting. The Planning Commission meets actually the same week as the next meeting, so it'll work out perfect that hopefully everything can get resolved at that time. They have some permitting stuff that they want to start moving forward on, but I don't anticipate the delay is going to cause them too much trouble because they're going to need some state review and that sort of thing, which is going to run the timeline pretty similarly.
Okay, so just table that one?
Yep.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, we need a motion to formally table pending action at the Planning Commission.
All right, can I get a motion for that, please? Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 2019, 2020, League of Minnesota Cities Workman's Compensation Insurance Quote. Who would like to own? Go for it.
Yes, I have good news for this. Our premium went down about 28% from last year. So this is all based up of claims we have over a three-year period. So do you remember, we had a couple of years that it was pretty high and it finally is coming back down, so hopefully it'll stay that way. Utility Commission has approved their portion at their last meeting, so the portion for the general fund is $53,744. We're just looking for approval to continue with the League of Minnesota Cities.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Downtown parking restrictions.
What do you mean? So related to the parking restrictions currently during business hours, 8 to 6 roughly, Monday through Saturday, there is a three-hour parking limitation in our downtown area, which includes Main Street basically from Coburn's all the way to Martinez Meats as well as the avenues north and south. So Second Avenue, Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue are the areas of concern. A business owner approached, myself as well as city staff, and asked that this be reviewed or discussed by the council as far as either lifting it, maybe modifying it or it could stay in place depending on what the council decision is. The business person owns a business that they front on Main Street, but they want to use the avenues parking for themselves and employees. Area of concern, obviously, with the businesses that are fronted on the avenue side is are other employees or customers using the avenues for parking. Therefore, now their business is suffering because they only have avenue entrance to their business. We've had some areas that have been more concerning than others, Third Avenue South being one in particular. We've done some parking enforcement there, which is like we do any of our enforcement, a written warning first, $10 citation, $20 citation, then on the $30 citation, it can be towed. We've never gotten to that point thankfully with any of the folks, but that's your concern. I spoke with some of the business owners in the area. They have mixed feelings. They don't want vehicles parked in front of their businesses for extended periods of time. Maybe the 24-hour parking ordinance is more effective for some of that because of some of the folks that do live in the apartments, where do they park and those sorts of things. So that's some area of concern. Nobody's here that had the concern as far as having it lifted, which I expected them to be, but I guess I leave it in the council's hand. It's been on the books since February 2001. For the most part, we've had hit-or-miss issues with it. It hasn't been something that's consistent and ongoing, but it does come and go.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question here. Craig, could you just talk briefly about signage? Do you, is everywhere signed? Because that was a comment that I received from one of the citizens about side street parking and signage. Do we or do we not do that?
So what happens with the avenues, so the side streets, is there's limitations on where the signs can go. I know I spoke with Gary from Streets and Parks as far as that, they probably have to erect poles in the middle of the block and sidewalks, those sorts of things. It hinders maintenances on the sidewalks, it hinders maintenance as far as snow removal, those sorts of things. I would highly doubt that any of the business owners wants them plugging a sign into the side of their building. There are signs posted on the stop signs themselves, which is obviously at the end of the block, so there could be a strong portion of the block that doesn't see any of that signage. Therefore, that can be the complaint that, well, I didn't know about it, I didn't see a sign, those sorts of things. And that's really why we do put the written warning on there first. Here's your notification, here's where it is if you have any questions. And generally, our officers will put on there, myself included, Turkey Lane is available to park on, First Street Northeast is available to park on. So it would be a one-block walk, give or take, one way or another, but there are alternatives to it. I see learned in the agenda that there's going to be some discussion about the craft lot, so that could tighten things a little bit downtown if there's any action taken over there or any modifications to that lot. But there are some alternative areas for parking if this stays in place, but as a department, we just want to make sure that whatever it is is being addressed consistently. And that's one of the discussions I had with a business owner. Parking is at the bottom of our to-do list, so we get to it when we can and we try and get to it as often as we can, but it's not something that we can guarantee on a daily basis.
Well, I think that, you know, the Main Street issue is one that shouldn't be changed. I think three hours out there around the clock should be the maximum, simply because it allows people to come and go from different businesses depending on what they're doing and then also it allows city maintenance to do their street sweeping and stuff early in the morning, their snow removal must be at night and so on and so forth. I kind of got the mixed feelings about the avenues. Available parking on the south side of the feed mill, there's a lot. And then the old craft lot, the winds whistling out of the northwest and it's pretty cold some mornings and I don't, I struggle with a business owner having to tromp through two blocks of cold and snow potentially to get to their business just so they can operate it. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but if we were inclined to be, to relax some restrictions, maybe during 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on the avenues or drop it all together on the avenues, I'm just, I don't know what the rest of the crew is thinking here, but like I say, it's a little unfair, I think, to have to. June, July, not so bad, you can carry an umbrella, but the winter months, it's a little tough to ask somebody to go stomp in two blocks to get to their place of business.
You'd like to see it more towards business hours?
Well, I think that would kind of remedy the situation, still have the three-hour parking on the avenues after, from, say, 6:00 in the evening till 6:00 in the morning.
Well, during that timeframe, we do have seasonal parking, November to April, so that's their early morning hours, 3:00 to 6:00 AM for the snow removal and those sorts of things. Otherwise, we do just, if it becomes an issue, it's 24-hour parking issues and that affect the evening. When businesses aren't open, it really hasn't been an issue as far as any extended parking. It's more or less the 8:00 to 6:00 and are the avenues, should we continue to have the avenues in the ordinance or should they be removed? It's probably the biggest discussion point, would be my assumption for the council.
Here's my thought on it. If we lift it off the avenues, I know it's going to get, it's going to get abused by business owners that have parking. I'm going to use Arvick as an example. Behind Turkey Lane, all those guys that park along Turkey Lane sit in that office all day long. They could easily go over there and park. And so if we lift it on the avenues, you're going to get people that have these, have these parking lots, those employees are going to come and park there. And he's still not going to be, you know, the one business owner that's asking for it is still not going to be able to park there because they're going to sit there all day long, their vehicles will. And then all the other businesses that are on the side streets, now they're getting affected by that too. Because now you can't get people that come in, you know, they're searching for parking and if there's no parking, well, guess what? Drive away and maybe I'll come back another day or, I don't know. It's hard. But I just know, I think it's going to get abused if we lift it off the avenues. I think you're going to get a lot of...
I don't know that much change is needed.
I don't know that much change is needed at this point. I mean, this isn't something we have to decide tonight anyway, but um, I don't know that there's a, you know, I haven't heard of a lot of support for lifting it right now. And I don't know that it's my place to even say what it should or shouldn't be. I think it's more up to the business owners, especially the ones that, you know, if we're just thinking the avenues, probably more so of them. If they don't have a problem with it, then I don't have a problem with it. You know, it's their business, so um honestly, I know, maybe we table it and wait to hear some feedback now that we've had a discussion at the council meeting about it and if there's uh no more heartburn over it, then we think about it some more, otherwise I think we just leave it alone for now.
We can go talk to, I mean, talk to those business owners that have sign.
And those are the folks that have the biggest concern is that they're they're limited on access to their doorway because of the avenue going so big as well as exposure, but um they're also concerned that, you know, whether it is the larger Arvick business like you spoke of, or uh the neighboring business owners or whatever that are using the spaces to make Main Street more attractive for their own businesses, those are the folks that have the most concern. Um, the folks on Main Street are pretty much up in the air, don't, it it doesn't bother them one way or another. How this ordinance is is exercised.
Yeah.
From a police department standpoint, if it's uh, I understand where where a council member Hill is talking about how, well, maybe it's in the winter, it's not as of concern because of the weather as opposed to summer. We would prefer consistency. If it's if it's in place, we use it year-round. If it's not in place, then we understand. We just make sure that the business owners are aware. So it's not abused one time a year or portions of the year and not others, I mean.
And that can be looked at two ways is, so maybe somebody, you know, just a thought, but a customer doesn't want to walk too far to get to whatever business they're trying to get to either, so if now you allow parking on side street all day during the winter, well, now you have people cluttering up business mortgages and now customers are not going to want to walk further to get to that business, so that's a double-edged sword too, I guess. I don't know if we, I mean, it's, we can just table it and wait for, you know, I think it ultimately it's up to the business owners. If we change something, I think there should be a lot of support for changing it.
Tony, I agree with you on that and and if it was a big concern, someone should have been here tonight.
That was my belief as well.
Yeah, and that's the other thing is that, you know, we we changed the location of the meeting, maybe somebody was, but didn't get the memo that it was the meeting was being held at the firehouse. Maybe we give them another chance to come and talk about it also.
Yep, because they could bring it up at the open forum and then we can see if it's to put it on the agenda again. At least we talked about it. It'll be in the news, so and we can hear more.
True. Would you like me to do anything actively as far as um door-to-door meeting with folks and say, hey, if you want to discuss this or have the council make a decision one way or another or to whatever? Or should we just, as it's now in the media, leave it as that our blinkered notification or?
Because where where is the business that, I mean, I guess I'm not totally
So the biggest area of concern is Third Avenue Southeast, um and that would be between the Arvick Building, um Schmidt Printing, um American Family Insurance, that's that area that's the biggest concern. Uh, the person that approached me has a business on Main Street within the block towards the east of that intersection and that's where they generally park.
Part of me then is thinking like, he's not really caring about video rentals and American Family if he wants that lifted, because then he's going to park there and use up spots for their customers.
And that's, that's what we're seeing right now.
Yeah.
If you take like a five, the last five years, has it been an issue overall or has it just been brought up some some ticketing or notifications?
Right, since it's gotten to the point where citations have started to be issued, people get more concerned when money comes out of their pocket as opposed to the written warning. The written warning's been very effective for a lot of folks and then there's other folks that it's gets lax at times where they come back and go following it back into the old ways or whatever else and and all sorts of things. So I think once the money starts coming out of the pocket, then it gets to be more concerning for people.
You know, and in the future, if they do bring it up, I mean, I feel a little more comfortable about it that we would have to talk to those big businesses, credit unions, the Arvicks, um some of the other ones that you do have parking lots. You need to tell your employees to utilize them or if they rent things based at your building, you need to utilize that, so truly that the people that need it can have it, but like I said, I think, Tony, you're right. I think we should find more input if it's that important to them.
Okay. I don't, I don't know. No need to actively search or get get opinions or anything. I think if it's an issue, they'll come forward.
Yep, that's what our open forum is for.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Motion to table?
Actually, you don't have to do anything. There's no action here, it's just a discussion item, so.
All right, hopefully we can speed up the rest of this. Uh, fire an ambulance station apartment furniture replacement. Do we have any issues with that? I don't think so.
We we want to know the model and
Yeah, the style.
What color, what color sheets? Is it available to the public?
Can I get a motion to approve it, please?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Do we have, do we have an amount, we have standards?
Five hundred bucks.
No, it's too bad.
What I did was I just went online to Slumberland and I just looked up what I stopped, like I, because I didn't know how to get a quote.
Uh, so Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd recommend it not to exceed number of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's kind of a nice thing to do, so.
So who made the motion? Because I missed that.
I did. Do I have to amend my motion now?
Yeah.
Probably should, yeah. Just, we're just, yeah.
I can do that.
Since she didn't catch it anyway, it didn't actually happen.
Okay.
Is that
With a limit
Is that enough?
With a limit to
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred dollars. It's spent on furniture for the apartment.
Hang on, first.
Second.
Second. Unfair say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Uh, ambulance apartment policies, do we need Jen to talk about it or?
It's just that she just, uh, between her and Tessa, they sat down and went through in great detail to bring it up in line. Uh, there's a red line of the policy within your document. There's nothing earth-shattering difference here. Uh, the Dr. Beretta has reviewed this as well, the staff had reviewed it, the ambulance members have reviewed it. Therefore, it's our recommendation to approve it, to bring it into compliance with current standards.
All right, can I get a motion to approve it, please?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Unfair say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Uh, summer intern community development, can I get a motion to approve that?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Unfair say aye.
Aye.
Please, motion carried. Seasonal help, public works, general. Any questions? Can you get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Unfair say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Old business, EAW craft lot.
Staff's been working um with a developer regarding the craft lot. They're somewhat hesitant, it seems, and moving forward at this time. Um, staff was hoping at this meeting to be able to have you move forward with authorizing an EAW um and also authorizing um some terms regarding the developer, but it seems we're not quite as quickly moving forward on that as we had hoped. Um, so at this point, um, part one is to authorize staff to move forward with securing a developer. Um, approaching different individuals, hoping that we can get someone who's interested in moving forward. Um, staff went to um speak at the Senate Finance Committee um regarding funding um and the funding package that was previously approved and getting that reauthorized this year, so we're hopeful that that will continue to move forward. And also the tax
Sales tax, yeah.
The sales tax um waiver. So that's where things are on that. Um, so at this point, uh, the first step would be to authorize staff to move forward with finding a developer ready to make a soft commitment to the Riverview redevelopment project, which is a craft lot.
We just want to be able to continue our conversations with these people that we're working through behind the scenes. Uh, we have a handful of developers that are expressing interest, so we just want to continue that process. Um, and then if, once we get a proposal from them, staff would then bring that before the EDA Board and then bring it to the council that following that traditional process.
And we just want to be transparent.
Is there anything in particular they're looking at doing with the lot that you're aware of?
What we're doing, the all the communication that we have with any particular developers that we're looking for some type of mixed-use uh, commercial residential development.
What we've been seeing is mostly mixed-use on the main floor, fronting the road, apartments on the backside fronting the river, and then typically about two to three stories of apartments above.
Have we just, just maybe, have we ever listed this with a real estate agent or a commercial uh real estate?
No, what we've been doing is contacting, um, we've had a number of people step forward that have done similar types of developments since we've just started to kind of work with um an expanded number of developers and just saying, here's, here's what we have that we know as far as available options and kind of pursuing it that way.
A tattoo shop in the front and a chopper assembly shop in the back or?
We have expensive uses.
Because the the perks that are going along with this lot are pretty phenomenal to the right developer. If we had to work that hard with what we are, we have in the past been willing to help out with, you know, maybe we just got to get it in, you know, listed with a with a commercial real estate agent. You know, give it a try for three months, six months, see if we get any hits. I don't know how fussy we are as far as what I don't know how fussy we can be as far as what gets put there. You know, if somebody else come put a restaurant on a lot, I'm probably okay with that.
Yeah, the uses would be what's basically allowed downtown. Our ordinance amendment allowed that for the first floor facing the
But I'm saying if we're requiring, you're saying we're after twenty-four apartments on second, third levels, I mean, then we want to commercial underneath and you know, I I think like a restaurant is allowed.
Mm-hmm. Restaurant, offices, retail.
So, you know, if somebody's willing to take that out of our hands and start paying taxes on the property, then
Certainly.
I'm open to that, so.
I'm not sure what the cost estimate would be for listing real estate with the
Generally, it's a percentage, isn't it?
Generally, a percentage of the sale. Depending on how we have this incentive package, it'd have to be some type of cash in lieu of
Or something paid out of the TIF or something, I suppose.
In the interest of keeping costs lower, at this point, we've just sort of started to talk with individual developers, but certainly we could look at doing a listing if that's what you would prefer as
I don't know if it hurts to make phone call, you know, to
Mr. Mayor and Council, what I'd recommend then is that uh between now and the next meeting, I can, Lisa can make some phone calls to uh to see what's, see how that could potentially look and bring it back. You know, or even discuss that to the next matter board meeting, too.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts. I mean, if you ask them and just tell them layout what the benefits are, like, we got this, we got that, we got that, like, see what they think. I mean, they might be like, I think we, I think we can sell this for it, you know.
And we've got, um, in your packet was a a letter that we've used that sort of clearly outlines um what the sort of setup is and then also an RFI, which is basically outlines the background for the lot. So I think it's a pretty clear package at this point, so.
If you decide, yeah, you want to work with a realtor listed, yeah, you want to do your homework to see what's out there, but before you sign somebody up, I think you'd want to a request for proposals and evaluate multiple, hopefully multiple folks. You would just want to just award it to somebody without having
Right, yeah. Typically, you sign up, you're locked in for six months or whatever. I got a couple of mine, too, so.
So how do we want to do this? Move forward with securing a developer first, part one of this, or?
Yeah, I think that's still very appropriate to authorize staff to continue the conversations uh that we have.
Okay.
Who did the motion, sorry?
Travis, you're first, I got a second?
Second.
Okay, first and second. Unfair say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Relating to the EAW, we would just say take no action on that one since we don't have anything for you tonight. However, once we do get a soft handshake agreement, that's when we would want to move forward on that.
Great. And the thought with with even putting it on the agenda was um that potentially would sort of keep things moving forward. But because if there's less than twenty-four residential units, it wouldn't require an EAW, there's some inherent risk there, so that's why we're recommending that.
So we're talking soft commitment. Um, does that lock them in at all, though? I mean, twenty thousand dollars is a lot.
We believe uh that, actually, I know, that uh that if, once the state appropriations passes the tax bill, that will be an eligible expense. So we'll be able to draw that out of that fund, if worst-case scenario is that it doesn't
I just don't want it to be like, okay, we got that done now with the soft and then they ask for more and then all of a sudden they back up.
Well, that's where we would kind of have a, that's where we would have a preliminary terms agreement. We would work something out with that scenario.
Right.
So we don't want, that's why we want to take, that's why we don't want to take anything right now on the EAW. It's getting close, but we're just not there yet.
Okay.
Table that.
The third part is related to the historic assessment that was done um in common, in conjunction with the EAW that was done related to the River and the Bridge Project. We expanded that to also include the craft lot and all of that work was done last year. We just haven't formally adopted this historic um report. Um, basically, they found no historic in elements within the study area. Should something be unearthed during construction, then of course we'd need to notify the appropriate entities and cease work until that was resolved, but basically, there is not anticipated to be any issues and this is following up on the recommendations from the state uh Historic Preservation Office following the initial review of the EAW for the river. So when we do the EAW, if we do the EAW for the craft lot, this part of it's already approved now and done.
Okay.
Uh, there was one thing I noticed in there, so it's talked about the dam removal. Um, in two thousand eleven, there was some blurb in there. You know, I was a little confused by it, but then it mentioned that the dam, existing dam, was not of historic nature, so I wonder if that wasn't referring to that lower dam that used to be there.
I think it was, yeah. I had read that too. I initially was confused.
Yeah, but it's listed up there as the only dam, the one that was removed, I think, in the list of potential historic. So I don't know if we can just double-check that and make sure that they have the existing dam in there as nonhistoric in nature or whatever, because it worked, make sure they understand there were two dams there, right?
Sure.
There was an old dam that was removed.
I think that was clear, but I'll make sure that that is indeed clarified. I think you could um approve it with that.
Yeah, understanding that, that's
Are you making that motion, Tony?
You bet. So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Unfair say aye. Posed, motion carried. So we're done with you then, right? All right. City Center HVAC system, um, did you guys have any questions about this at all? I mean, we've done through this quite a bit.
Yeah, the only question I still have is, okay, so we have an engineer that designs it. We vetted out another third party similar to road construction. They design it. Construction crew comes in, does it exactly according to engineering specs. Doesn't work, then what? Is there a guarantee in the engineering engineering uh whatever that is, you know, it just doesn't work yet? We're not on the hook for, we, you know.
Well, there's performance, uh, there will be a performance bond with this project. Uh, and this is a pretty straightforward
Yeah.
air conditioning replacement, uh
Right.
So I I don't believe that's going to be any real concern here in this situation. But it's it's a legitimate question. Uh, if we had something a little bit more technical, like a wastewater plant, um, that would be removal systems and all that. But generally, what happens is they, the engineer will sign off on, as per the design, it'll it'll meet that standard, so very, very rarely does it not.
All right. Cross that bridge, buddy. If it.
Melissa hit the street tomorrow and it's the council, if the council approves this.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve that, please?
So move.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Unfair say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. All right, uh, let's see here, two thousand nineteen state, state and uh straight improvement projects. Who would like to take that?
I'll have Mike do that.
Mike?
Do you want me to set up your computer mic?
Um, sure, but you need the uh jumper, yeah. You need to take my jumper.
So I'll put it in the information. So, I'll put it in the information.
Okay, um, all right, so the two thousand and nineteen street improvement projects, which includes the areas of downtown, second avenue to third avenue, third avenue southeast from Turk Lane to Main Street, fourth avenue from Turk Lane to Main Street, fifth avenue from Turk Lane to the end, which is a reconstruction, that's the segment, there's half a dozen houses down there currently as a rural segment, I was just proposing to actually reclaim it, why didn't we leave it as a rural section. We had proposed turnaround at the end, currently there isn't any, there's a, there's a field approach about halfway down, I think that they kind of utilize right now, the school bus uses it as a private driveway at the south end of the project. We had wanted to remove that field approach, take the arch pipe and move it down to the end of the road and make a turnaround down there that would better suit the school buses, the emergency vehicles, we met with the property owner tonight. Gary, what's the name of that guy? The approach on Fifth Avenue?
Grand Chamber.
Okay, he has trucks that use that approach kind of as a turnaround there, so he'd like it to remain, so I guess the question is, do we wanna spend the money to add a turnaround at the south end of that property for the school bus and for plow trucks and emergency vehicles? We're probably looking at about, probably in the neighborhood of eighteen to twenty thousand dollars to do that. We originally don't hear, thought about a cul-de-sac, we don't think that's necessary. The turnaround could be added at a future date, I think one of the issues is school bus turnaround and private drive down, you know, but. So most of the students get off of that bus and go to her place, so if that ends, the concern is that she won't want the school bus turning around in her driveway anymore, so I don't know, any thoughts on that, whether we wanna include a turnaround at the south end or just leave it out for now, add it at a future date if it becomes necessary?
Just leave it. Leave it for now, otherwise, I don't know, can you just put like a, at the end of the asphalt, put a?
Yeah, we were just gonna put like a hammer handle, you know, just essentially a driveway going off into the field.
That was kinda like, just a big asphalt, classified pad or something that you can use.
Yeah, the issue is there's that big ditch in there, and I think there's, it's about a, there's a big arch pipe in there, that's probably about an eight to ten thousand dollar pipe, just to add that, plus the, the filled material, the gravel and the surface thing, so that's kinda where the cost runs up to do that. That's why we had hoped to salvage the other pipe and just move it down the road, but we have to leave it at that location, so.
I think just leave it alone.
Leave it for now, I don't, it'll cost a lot more.
Yeah, other than that, I think we're ready to go to bids, we've got plans, are about ninety-eight percent done, I have just a couple of questions for Gary. The ad for bid, if we wanna have bids opened and ready for the next council meeting, we have to get the ad for bid to the newspaper tomorrow, it would go in the paper on Wednesday, and then we would open bids on the twenty-first, so that would give us time to get it ready for the council meeting, I don't think you'd have it too far in advance, but we can get bids categorized, letter of recommendation ready, and we'll be able to act on it at that time. Otherwise, we're gonna have to push it off till the next meeting, which I don't think would be a detriment, but usually the sooner we get them out, the better prices we get.
All right.
So we're discussed it, and we don't have to discuss it at next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Go forward with it, as, stay on.
Yep.
Do we need a motion for Mike to go forward with the?
Yeah, we need a motion to consider advertising for it, can I get a motion to?
So move.
Okay, can you say a second?
Second.
I'm fair, say aye?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried. County Road thirteen Bridge and Channel realignment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm, as you're all unsure, been aware, this is a project that's been going on for about almost five years now.
Six.
Six, okay.
You're gonna miss it, aren't you?
Yeah. So, I think the council made a decision, I think it was last week, to not go with the lowering of the lake, so we're trying to propose some legislative funding that would allow us to do the downstream channel improvements from the bridge, or from the, from the dam south, at a very minimum, we need to realign it so that it comes into the park. If we receive additional funding, we would do some stream improvements all the way down to the wastewater treatment plant curve down there. Those options right now are not included in our proposal because we don't know if we're gonna get that funding. So the proposal for Engineering Services before you tonight is to design the bridge with phase one downstream improvements, which includes the channel realignment, the new bridge, and then filling in the craft wall area to make it more usable and just much more usable space there. So the things that remain to be done are the final channel hydraulics, we have to complete the KOMAR, which is the calculated letter of map production, which is the FEMA requirement, we have to do the modeling to prove that we're not gonna create downstream flooding, the bridge design, we have to do some geotechnical investigation yet, with that alternate bridge design, we need another river channel boring. The environmental assessment worksheet that was completed previously does not need to be updated, we included the four gamut page one and two in that EAW because we're only using state money, we don't have to update the EAW, if it was federal money, we would have to make the EAW exactly as, so there's no additional cost there. Again, we've got the permitting, we've got ninety-five hundred dollars in there for that, we're hoping that that goes smoothly, that the DNR is a little more cooperative in this portion of it than they were in the past. We've got fifteen hundred dollars in there for some additional channel survey. The big things are the hydraulic study, the KOMAR, the ROMAR, and then the bridge design itself. Mike had sent out an email, kind of a comparison from the fees that we had looked at back in two thousand and seventeen, before we started the Rock Arch Rapids investigation, we're significantly lower than what we had anticipated back then. We've got a total cost of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to complete tasks one through eight, and we had estimated back in two thousand and seventeen, a range of two hundred and seventy-five thousand to three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so out of that, we have completed the EAW, we had estimated forty to forty-five thousand dollars for that, that is complete, and then the wetland delineation and mitigation, the delineation has been done, and there are no wetlands that need to be mitigated, that's a positive note. So in that design fee, some of the tricky things yet, obviously, are the bridge design, I think we've gotta go probably, kind of just revisit, I think sidewalk width was an issue in our last council action, we had a sidewalk that went under the bridge, from the park and crossed under the bridge on the north side of the, north of Botman, and then continued up along the lake, that was removed. We had a ten-foot trail on the east side of the bridge and an eight-foot sidewalk on the west side of the bridge. The state will pay for a six-foot sidewalk on each side of the roadway, so we can have either trail on one side, I think you can get that all paid for, or we could have a six-foot sidewalk on each side and get that paid for, so any additional sidewalk width or trail width beyond that twelve-foot total would be at sea expense, so there probably is a little bit of discussion that needs to go on there. And I, I think there was pretty much general consensus that the sidewalk underneath the bridge was not necessary, it actually increased the height of the bridge, made that road steeper going down the hill, I think there's a lot of benefit to leaving it out, so besides the cost savings, so. Yeah, I think, yeah, covered the two-foot side, two six-foot sidewalks producing the path underneath. Yeah, so we'll be designing the bridge to allow future dam removal, if and when that ever occurs, it may not be for forty or fifty or more years, but at least the downstream improvements will be in place in case that ever happens, so. With that, I don't know, Mike, is there anything else that?
Thank you for your detailed report.
Thank you, council, any questions?
Well, I just, I'm maybe kinda catching up here, but, so what we're gonna see is something that, that is gonna be feasible, that we're gonna, that the county and everybody's gonna be able to go with, if the DNR doesn't approve phase one, phase two? Cause unfortunately, I hate to say it, but I don't have a lot of faith in those folks after the last few months.
I, I'm biting my tongue, but, yes, no, I, that's a great question, I think everybody has the same feeling. The, they're really, from what we understood prior to the Rock Arch Rapids was, there was really no reason not to approve the channel realignment downstream, as long as we can meet our flood requirements, which we have shown that we can. I'm going to say with a fairly high level of confidence that it can be approved, I, I don't make the decision, but.
No, and, and that's not what I'm asking, I guess what I'm asking is, the bridge design that you're planning on for right now, will anything need to be changed if we don't move a stone, we don't move a retaining law, or if phase one, which I think has kinda to do with the south side there of the river?
If I understand what you're asking is, the bridge we're building today, if there's nothing else in the future, will there be any issue with that bridge, and no.
Okay, so the design will be fine today, and we get all kinds of permits and okays from the DNR, the, the design for the bridge, will we okay that?
It should, yes, I mean, I, unless the rules change, you know, twenty years down the road, it should be, I mean, the intent is to keep the channel clear so that, the reason that the DNR doesn't like a pier in the center of the channel is, number one, if the dam does fail, then you get that big rush of water, it blows out that center pier. If the dam is removed, they don't want it there for recreational purposes, so I think we're covering both, both of those conditions, and certainly should be fine, so.
So, just provide consideration to enter into a contract with WSB for bridges, bridge design work, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
You get a second?
Second.
I'm fair, say aye?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried, twenty nineteen County Road sixty-five sidewalk.
Real simple here, we wanna move forward, well, the direction was to move forward with the sidewalk from basically the bowling alley down to Jenniel. WSB has presented a proposal here to get us through the finish line on that project and to get that out for bid. So having said that, provide consideration to allow staff to finalize bids and specs and seek bids once the plans are complete. We have, I know Gary and Mike had a, a meeting today with one of the adjacent property owners to get their thought on the slope and stuff like that, so just some real minor changes that we need to make to the plan yet, but otherwise it's good to go.
Can you get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can you say a?
Second.
I'm fair, say aye?
Aye.
The next thing is relating to funding of this, staff is recommending that we use a portion of the Jenniel Turkey TIP proceeds to do that, and so we would need a motion to allow us to, to use those TIP proceeds as outlined in the, in the action item here.
So move.
Can you say a?
Second.
I'm fair, say aye?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried. Face ox center Melrose Lake Resolution number twenty nineteen dash six, and resolution committing to phase two of the Melrose Lake improvement.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is kind of a unique resolution, the reason we're doing this, our staff is recommending that we do this, is that through the partnerships with the DNR, through the watersheds, and all these other organizations are saying, well, if we support this, how do we know that you're gonna do this in the future? Well, we don't know, we don't know what all the rules are, we don't know what the regulations will be in ten, twenty, thirty years, whenever the dam needs to be removed. However, this, what this resolution does, it specifically states that we will follow the rules for looking at a phased approach to what a project may or may not look like. That's all this resolution is saying, however, it's still a resolution that says that we have to move forward with some type of phased approach to this project. It may be a drawdown, it may not be a drawdown, it may be a, a Rock Arch Rapids with maintaining the pool, it may not, we don't know what it's gonna look like, cause we don't know what the rules are, cause that was the resolution, and that was the letter that we got back from the DNR, saying, well, we can't authorize anything until we get a permit from you to review it, and we don't know what the rules are, and we have to comply with these rules, and so that's what we're saying, is that we'll comply with the rules. So if the dam, for example, the DNR states that they will not allow us to put in a one for one replacement of the dam, under the current rules, well, we'll comply with that.
If, yeah.
If the rules are that, that's?
If, if that is a, in fact, because, I mean, they will tell you, right, right, when you ask the question at first, they're gonna tell you, yeah, you can't replace it, right? So, political fuss, you might eventually get to replace it, so.
First, Mayor, just to comment, I was reviewing the bonding bill, and in there was some bridge replacement money, and actually fourteen point four million of it was for DNR bridge or dam.
Dam improvements, yeah, yeah.
So, I, yeah, I, I don't think it's an absolute no, I mean, they may say no, but certainly the phased approach on dam repair also, a lot of that money was for the emergency dam repair, so, you know, if you get to that point and you're not ready to take the dam out, I would apply for some funding to repair the dam.
It just depends on who's writing the rules that week.
Provide consideration to endorse phase two resolution, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Can you say a? I'm fair, say aye?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried, we're on to new business, twenty nineteen Chip Seal Projects.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Gary and I kinda reviewed what you'd like to do for Chip Seal, how we put that back together that didn't pass out. If the council wishes to move forward with that, we actually probably could get these bid at the same time, those still road repairs, we got the advertising tomorrow, but I've actually kinda started on the plans since back so already, so getting, getting the plans uploaded for a March twenty-first bid opening shouldn't be a problem, so.
It's been a proposed budget item for a while now in long range, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Is there any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can you say a?
Second.
I'm fair, say aye?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried. We're on to informational items, RV communications correspondence, charter communications correspondence, initiative, foundation, thank you letter, public utilities commission meeting minutes, city administrators' performance evaluation, schools and conferences, I guess two other things, I just wanna thank the council for approving the donation of the fire truck coming back to Melrose, that's been a four-year process, and today I was contacted by, actually, my brother, Tom Finkin, who was a fire chief for, I don't know, six, eight years, and he's giving us a two thousand dollar check to the Melrose Fire Relief to help bring the truck back, so I just wanna say thank you to Tom Finkin. So I just want to say thank you to Tom Finkin and Finkin Water Centers for the donation of two thousand dollars. And last but not least, tonight is Mike's last meeting. So, yeah. Mike, I.
The door? The door is over here.
I just want to say thank you so much for making our community a great place. I, I will miss you a lot. I talk to you a lot. Um, so you're going to be very lucky going to a quiet place, or you're probably not going to get contacted as much as me. But, um, thank you so much for making Melrose a great place. You are a great leader and a friend, and, and I will truly miss you a lot. And, um, it's going to be big shoes to fill because you have done so much for our community these last years and, um, going on back home, you know, to where family is and, um, getting your dream job. And, and I'm not sad that you're going for that reason because you're getting, you know, me and you have talked over the years, and it's a place that you've always wanted to be. So you get to go somewhere great, and hopefully you can stop by and say hi. And just, you know, we do have something for you, of course. So, um, I just want to present you with a gift, Mike.
Another craft wall.
Yeah.
It's a brick. From the craft wall.
So here, we'll let you on that.
Does the catwalk have to be shut off or?
Oh, is this what I think it is?
I don't know. What do you think it is?
It's, oh, oh. Well, I am a whiskey bourbon drinker, so I appreciate that. This is wonderful.
It's a vase. What are you talking about?
Those are flowers.
So basically, it says, uh, Michael Bradhurst, City of Melrose, two thousand and eleven to two thousand and nineteen. So I, I guess I couldn't let you go until you open the other.
Well, we know you'll tell me.
But Mike, for all you donors, thank you, appreciate you, you know.
Thank you.
Happy for you. So with that being said, can I get a, a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Can you get a second?
Second.
I'm fair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.